Good afternoon. I am Kim Melnick, School Board Chair, and I hereby call this abridged meeting to order at 4:30 on this ninth day of June 2024. The purpose of the abridged meeting is for the school board to address limited matters that cannot be put off until the next regular school board meeting. School board retreats and abridged meetings are not regular meetings and follow the agenda set forth for the meeting or as otherwise adopted by the school board at the retreat or abridged meeting. Members of the public will still be able to observe this school board meeting through live streaming on schoolboard.vbschools.com/meetings/live, broadcast on VBTV, Channel 47, and on Zoom. Thank you to those who have joined us in person and online. Madam Clerk, will you please announce those school board members in attendance?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Present in the Plaza Annex Professional Development Center is Chair Melnick, Vice Chair Franklin, Ms. Anderson, Ms. Brown, Mr. Callen, Ms. Kendrick, Ms. Manning, Ms. Owens, Ms. Riggs, and Ms. Weems, and I was just informed that Mr. Culpepper is attending online via Zoom.
Excellent. Okay, would everyone please join me in observing a moment of silence? And please stand as you are able for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, are there any modifications to the agenda as presented? All right, seeing none, I call for a motion to approve the agenda as presented. Motion made by Ms. Franklin, seconded by Ms. Kendrick. Any discussion? Okay, this evening we will have to raise our hands, so all in favor, please raise your hand.
And Mr. Callen, Mr. Culpepper, how do you vote for the adoption of the agenda?
Aye.
Thank you. Madam Chair, we have 11 ayes. The motion did pass.
Thank you. Are there any modifications to the June 25, 2024 regular school board meeting minutes as presented? All right, seeing none, I call for a motion to approve those minutes as presented. Motion made by Ms. Anderson, seconded by Mr. Callen. Any discussion? All right, all in favor, please raise your hand.
And Mr. Culpepper, how do you vote for the approval of the minutes?
Aye.
Thank you, Madam Chair. We have 11 ayes. The motion did pass.
I think... I'm just hearing that Mr. Culpepper was not present, nor did he Zoom last time, so he might want to abstain on June 25th? I'm just asking. I'm hearing this down here.
If he watched the minutes or even read the minutes, he is allowed to vote.
Okay, that's new. Reading them? Okay.
No, give a clarification, Regina. I did observe the meeting.
Okay, perfect. Thank you. I was just reacting to what was around me, that's all. Thank you, Mr. Culpepper. All right, this evening there are no items under information, and so we can take care of that offline, okay? So we'll move on to action, and tonight we will start with our personnel and administrative appointments. I call for a motion to approve the July 9, 2024 Personnel Report and Administrative Appointments. Motion made by Ms. Owens. Do I have a second? Second by Ms. Franklin. Any discussion? Okay, then I call for a vote to approve the Personnel Report. All in favor, please raise your hands.
And Mr. Culpepper, how do you vote for the Personnel Report and Administrative Appointments?
Aye.
Thank you, Madam Chair. We have 11 ayes. The motion did pass.
Okay, Dr. Robertson, are there any administrative appointments this evening?
Yes, Madam Chair. I'm pleased that you've accepted our recommendation. Recommendation for Carrie Kelly, currently an Admin Assistant at Glenwood and Kentsville Elementary School, to be the next Assistant Principal at Thurgood Elementary School. I'm also pleased that you've accepted our recommendation for Hannah Pritchard, currently an Admin Assistant at WT Cook Elementary School, to be the next Assistant Principal at Red Mill Elementary School. Next up is Lauren Salas. I'm pleased that you've accepted our recommendation for Lauren, who's currently an Admin Assistant at College Park in Thalia, to be the next Assistant Principal at Lanstown Elementary School. And then finally, proud that you've accepted our recommendation of Olivia Snyder, currently an Admin Assistant at Corporate Land Elementary School, to be the next Assistant Principal at Hermanage Elementary School. Thank you.
That's wonderful. Congratulations to everyone. Okay, Item B is the Revised Salary Resolution. I call for a motion to approve the Revised Salary Resolution for fiscal year 24-25 and the following attachments which were included in the Agenda Packet. You received this evening Attachment A, the Instructional Experience-Based Step Pay Scale from August 1, 2024 to June 30 of '25, and Attachment B, the Unified Experience-Based Step Pay Scale, August 1, '24 through June 30, 2025. Do I have a motion? All right, motion made by Ms. Brown, seconded by Ms. Kendrick. At this time, I'll ask Vice Chair Franklin to read the Revised Salary Resolutions.
Whereas the mission of the Virginia Beach City Public Schools in partnership with our entire community is to ensure that each student is empowered with the knowledge and skills necessary to meet the challenges of the future, and whereas the school board has adopted a comprehensive strategic plan and school improvement priorities to guide budgetary decisions, and whereas the school board has studied the recommended school operating budget in view of state and federal requirements, additional demands for space and operations, the strategic plan, priorities, expectations, competitive compensation for employees, and the best educational interests of its students, and whereas the school board's operating budget has been reconciled to meet the funding from the City Council, and whereas all full-time equivalent employees in a benefited position will receive a 2% increase effective August 1, 2024, and whereas the percent increase for the Instructional Experience-Based Step Pay Scale and Unified Experience-Based Step Pay Scale, as titled and shown in the attachments, are approved, it will be effective as indicated below. Attachment A, Instructional Experience-Based Step Pay Scale, August 1, 2024 to 6/30, 2025; Attachment B, Unified Experience-Based Step Pay Scale, from August 1, 2024 to 6/30, 2025. Now therefore let it be resolved that the school board adopts the salary scales and the compensation increases as outlined in this resolution and attachments adopted by the school board this ninth day of July 2024.
All right, is there any discussion? Okay, then. I call for a vote to approve the Revised Salary Resolution fiscal year 24-25 and the following attachments which were included in the Agenda Packet. All in favor, please raise your hand.
And Mr. Culpepper, how do you vote on the Revised Salary Resolution?
Aye.
Thank you, Madam Chair. We have 11 ayes. The motion did pass.
Okay, and our last item is adding an additional third grade classroom at Old Donation School. I call for a motion to approve an additional third grade classroom being added to Old Donation School based on the considerations and information shared at the June 25, 2024 school board meeting. Motion by Mr. Callen, seconded by Ms. Franklin. Any discussion?
Ready for me?
Yes.
Okay. All right, colleagues, at the last meeting I mentioned that governance isn't perfect. There's no perfect solution for ODS. There have been conversations regarding a classroom at ODS for the better part of an entire year. Due to the timing, there's no ability for people to reopen applications, which is understandable. In the '22-'23 school year, 97 students were in the highest tier. In the '23-'24 school year, 244 students in the highest tier. And for '24-'25 school year, 58 students were in the highest tier. To me, the data is pretty clear. There was an exceptionally high number of students in the highest tier in the '23-'24 applicant pool and in this cohort. Additionally, it is unprecedented to add 26 seats after the applicant pool has closed. I don't want to wait to begin delivery of gifted services to the students that applied this year, and I also want to have this opportunity to notify the families that there's going to be additional seats so that they can apply if they'd like to. Again, waiting until now in July, prior to the opening of this classroom, was the board's decision, and so with that I offer a substitute to instead add eight seats to the third grade at ODS for the '24-'25 school year. These seats will be distributed equitably across the five existing third grade classrooms. For the '25-'26 school year, an additional ODS fourth grade classroom consisting of 26 students will be added. This additional classroom will continue as a fifth grade classroom for the '26-'27 school year. This additional class will not continue after the '26-'27 school year. And this process would be made in an endem to the current local plan for the education of the gifted, and will remain in effect until the end of the '26-'27 school year. And I also have the process, and it's sitting in front of everyone, and I emailed it for your consideration. Do I need to read the whole thing, Kimmy? I probably should. I think I should read it. Okay. So during the '24-'25 school year, eight additional ODS third grade seats will be added for the '24-'25 school year and offered to applicants currently in the applicant pool. The superintendent or designees will be responsible for assigning the additional seats to existing classrooms. Only rising third grade applicants who have completed the ODS application process during the '23-'24 school year are eligible for the ODS third grade seats that became available before the start of the '24-'25 school year. No additional applications or exceptions to the requirement for applying for '24-'25 school year, ODS third grade available seats will be made. Applicants will be selected to fill the ODS third grade seats based on their rating scores from highest to lowest, 555, 554, et cetera. If there are more applicants with the highest rating score, 555, et cetera, than there are available seats, a random draw will occur from similarly scored applicants. If there are less applicants with the highest rating score, then there are available seats. Then the applicants with the highest rating score will be offered available seats first, and remaining available seats will be offered to applicants from the next tier, 554, 544, et cetera. If there are more applicants with the highest tier score than there are available seats, then a random draw from that tier will occur to fill the available seats. The same process will be followed if it is necessary to fill available seats from the lowest, lower tiers. Applicants not selected will remain in the applicant pool for consideration for seats that become available before the start of the '24-'25 school year. The applicant pool will be discontinued on August 26, '24, and there will be no appeals for this process. Prior to the start of the next ODS application process during the '24-'25 school year, the school division will communicate with families of VBCPS third grade students that ODS will have an additional fourth grade classroom during the '25-'26 school year that will be filled by ODS students continuing to fourth grade and applicants for any available fourth grade seats. Only applicants for the '25-'26 ODS fourth grade seats who complete the application process during the '24-'25 school year are eligible for the '25-'26 fourth grade seats that are not filled by rising ODS fourth grade students. Sorry, guys, that's a lot of reading. Applicants for available seats will be selected based on their rating score from highest to lowest score, 555, 554, et cetera. If there are more applicants with the highest rating score than there are available seats, a random draw will occur. If there are less applicants with the highest rating score than there are available seats, applicants from the next tier, 554, 544, et cetera, will be selected. Applicants not selected will remain in the applicant pool for considerations for seats that become available before the start of the '25-'26 school year. The applicant pool will be discontinued on August 26, 2025, and there will be no appeals for this process. Prior to the start of the '25-'26 school year, the ODS Science Lab will be converted to a classroom for the ODS fourth grade. During the '25-'26 school year, there will be six ODS fourth grade classrooms. During the '26-'27 school year, there will be six ODS fifth grade classrooms. At the conclusion of the '26-'27 school year, the additional classroom will be discontinued. Do I have a second?
Second. Okay, Ms. Anderson.
Well, I understand why Ms. Brown came up with this modification. I really need to hear administration's response to this before I can consider it. So I would like administration to respond.
Can we wait until some other people have...
Well, I think we need information. We need to know.
We will, but can we just wait until some other questions are asked first by colleagues, and then we can defer to admin? Ms. Franklin?
Well, first of all, Ms. Brown, thank you for putting this together. I know that we've had a conversation, and we both feel some angst about how this is all possibly going to be resolved. However, you know, after looking at the process and the unintended consequences, I feel like I'm not as comfortable with this motion right now, just simply because the integrity of the application process has got to be respected, and I know that this is kind of a off, you know, solution, I should say, for a very different type of concern that we have with ODS, but, you know, I do feel like some of the unintended consequences are going to be that we're going to have a lot of cascading effect from other classrooms in ODS that also had 555s that didn't get in, academies that have people that don't, kids that don't get in. So I'm just concerned that, again, this, in my personal opinion, does need to have a vote in terms of being able to move forward for the upcoming school year because we're already fairly late to the game in, you know, in providing any kind of solution, and I think that this is going to further complicate the ability to move forwards. But I do really appreciate and understand why you are providing the substitute motion, and I appreciate your time on this.
And Ms. Brown, I too appreciate the work that you put into this, but there was one common theme from the parents that came and spoke over the past year, and that was, it was all focused on third grade. And the data that you just presented kind of proved that, that those numbers were higher for the third grade, and it was really the third grade that we really needed to focus on. In addition, we did a lot of work today, two hours' worth of a five-year plan for the gifted, and we were presented with a number of options, and a lot of great conversation took place, and if that went into place the next year, that would skew all of this. But I'm, and that, this is why I waited to... Just press your button, please. That's why I was waiting for Dr. Robertson just to weigh in, just because of all that work that was done today, and, again, we didn't hear from any other parents until... The only one that kind of matches what your, what your motion, your substitute motion, was for the parents that chose not to reapply. And I think that there were a group of parents who stuck with the process and reapplied, and they've been waiting, and those are the parents that we have heard from that... And I think that that's the only thing that needs to be addressed right now, is the third grade classroom, and I would not complicate it any further by voting on that, but I do appreciate that work. That was a lot of hard work. Ms. Weems?
Yes, thank you. Well, we will be criticized no matter what we do. I think, I think my colleagues up here realize that. In one case, if we do nothing, that probably assures that there's no unintended consequences, but I don't think, from talking to y'all, that the board wants to do nothing. So we've got two proposals here. One, the unintended consequence, or the consequence is who we've heard from, is, gosh, if I would have known this, I would have reapplied. I would have had my child reapply. Wow, y'all are changing this so late, you know, a few months before school, I would have, I would have definitely had my, my child reapply, so that's the consequence of one. And I think, if I'm not mistaken, I'm assuming Ms. Brown came up with the substitute motion because hers takes care of that consequence. I do appreciate that you have highest to lowest instead of just saying anybody with a 555, because of course we can't promise that, but, so, I mean, both of these have consequences. The only one that doesn't is by doing nothing, but then that has a consequence of, why didn't you do anything, school board? We've been talking to you for a year. So, but if, Chair, may I ask Ms. Brown a question? It said she... Okay. Ms. Brown, I'm assuming that this substitute motion is to alleviate what you thought was an unfair process of some parents not having their child reapply and not having their reply because they knew there would only be one or two spots open, and actually, we've heard from several that GRTs kind of encouraged them not to reapply. Is that an accurate statement? I mean, is that what the substitute...
Yes, that is, that is why I made the substitute motion. As a parent, I, I feel like having this input, and I took that input into account when I made the substitute, I feel like it's what's fairest, and that's what I would most certainly want. And that's not to criticize anyone's decision, but I most certainly would hope that a board would fight for what's fairest for the students, and so to me, the part that I was really struggling with, I tried to correct.
Okay, so with your substitute, the highest scores are going to get in now, they're going to be, just put in the different existing classes, and then the next year, everyone will be aware that we're going to add a class, so anyone and everyone will have that opportunity to apply, correct?
That is correct. Everybody in the substitute will be notified that's eligible.
I appreciate, I mean, you can tell that you spent a lot of time, and I've talked with you as well as other colleagues, and I do appreciate your time. Again, nothing's going to be fair according to some people. It depends on where you sit on this, and if your child got in, didn't get in, was on the cusp, didn't reapply and whatever, but I think that this is, this does alleviate the emails and the concerns that we have, is why didn't y'all tell us that you were going to do this? I didn't, my child did not reapply, so therefore my child has no option. So I'll wait, I'll wait, but I think definitely I can, I can support this, and I do think between the two options, this does take care of that, which I view is pretty unfair as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Well, first, I want to thank Dr. Robertson and his team for the work that you have done in presenting us with these options, the option that you presented, and I do appreciate that and support that. And, but I also support Ms. Brown's motion because I agree, and I'm going to keep this brief, because basically what I was going to say is what Ms. Weems said. I agree that this alleviates some of the concerns of parents who said, but I was told that there would only be one or two spots available, and for that reason, I didn't want to get my child's hopes up and then them be let down again. And so that's why many parents did not reapply, and having two students who are gifted students, I understand that they can be sensitive to these things much more than, you know, that's one of the traits of gifted students, of gifted children, you know, they have an expectation, and when it's, when that expectation is not met, it's difficult for them. And so I think Ms. Brown's substitute does help alleviate that and make it a little bit more equitable for those who did not reapply while also meeting the needs of the students with the highest need in our gifted population. Thank you.
So before we vote, I would just like to say for the record, I sat in a meeting with, this is what we were talking about, with almost all of you, and this came up. And I remember, I was the only one who said, but what about the parents who didn't apply? And everybody on this board said, oh, well, they didn't apply. And we, we did, we did, and I just, I'm confused by this, and I'm confused by the work that we did today. I know some of, some of, there are people over here that do remember that happening, so I'm confused by this, and I'm confused by the five-year plan work that we did today and the options that were presented to us today. To me, I mean, the entire time, the conversation has been about the third graders, and there were people that followed, that, there were lots of people that reapply that knew that they only had one or two chances to get in, and they too did not know that we were going to add a third grade class, and they, they applied based on a small chance that their child was going to get in. And that's what I remember that conversation being, and I had many colleagues that said they didn't follow the rules, and so I'm sorry about that, and I yield to Ms. Anderson.
Okay, first of all, this particular option does help eight students. That's the way it's lined out for this coming school year. However, the public has not had a chance to weigh in on this particular option, and I know this is our decision, but we have not presented this particular option to the public, and as you all are aware, we have had numerous emails from parents who are advising us to go ahead and add the third grade. Not only have we had emails, we've also had people who have attended our meetings and spoken about it, because that is what was on the table, to all of a sudden change it like this and give these eight... I see the point, and I do agree that I feel bad for those parents who chose not to allow their children to take the test because they thought we only had a couple of seats. However, we had like over 100 parents, I believe, who said, well, we're going to have our children take the test anyway. So while I agree that, you know, it's unfortunate that those parents, there are a few parents, and I'm not sure exactly how many there were, but there were a few who decided not to allow their children to take the test. And as I said earlier, I would really like to hear from administration how this proposal from, that Mrs. Brown is proposing would work, and how... from, that Mrs. Brown is proposing would work, and how if they all, which, which, I'd like to hear administration's response to this. But I, but my biggest thing is, the public has not had a chance at all to weigh in on this option if this is what we choose to do. So we're in a conundrum here, what do we do? I know we're in a time crunch also, we need to decide, because if we do go with adding a third grade, we've got to hire a teacher between now and the time school starts. That's a huge conundrum of how, how we handle this. But I need, I need to hear, I need to hear from administration before I can vote on this.
Okay, and before that happens, we just need to let Mr. Culpepper speak.
Thank you, Smelick. I'm sure you can see my hand raised. First, the first thing I want to say is, you know, give credit where credit is due, and thank Mr. Callen and Ms. Franklin for getting the ball rolling on this discussion, as we had talked about before, you know, there's called to let the, on the one hand, the option was to do nothing, and on the other hand, is something. And I think we're, I think we're finding now here, now someplace in the middle that is perhaps more effective than our current plan, which is not, which is not perfect, because there is no perfect plan. No matter what, no matter what path we choose here, somebody's probably not going to love it. But this addresses several points. And, you know, the first one obviously is, is that Ms. Brown developed this based on public comment. So the public has been commenting for quite some time on this issue, and giving a lot of ideas on how to address it, and a lot of these are incorporated in Ms. Brown's plan. To me, this is kind of the proverbial splitting of the baby, because the, as Ms. Melick pointed out, the primary complaint we got was that if you didn't apply this year, you're not considered. And there was an initial reaction from us, the board was, well, you know, that's how it goes. If you had wanted to be there, you would have applied. And that's where we get to the splitting part. So people who did apply and expected there to be maybe two or three seats, in fact, we're making eight. And now we're also giving ample opportunity to people to know that there's an application window opening for a full class of 26 in the following year. So I, I do think this addresses the major issues we're concerned with. But I'm also agree with Ms. Anderson here. I, I am interested to hear how, how the superintendent, how administration intends to address this particular option. That's all, thank you.
Ms. Owens is in the queue.
Ms. Owens?
Thank you. I was actually going to wait, but I don't know how this vote is going to turn out to know if I'm going to have an opportunity to speak after this vote. So we have a, obviously, difficult decision in front of us, as we always do. For me, I can't, can't overlook the fact that 57% of our school division's gifted education budget is currently being spent on ODS, which is serving just 11% of our gifted population. We've heard from the community and, you know, from others about, you know, just general concerns about how, as a division, we want to do more to serve our, our gifted students. And we've had suggestions about satellite centers or making changes throughout our program, and obviously, concerns about how we would be able to fund that as well. And now, we've found some funds, just a little, but we've found some funds. And given the totality of the picture, I feel like those funds can go to bolster and support the dedicated work that our GRTs are providing to the about 90% of our gifted learners who are not attending ODS. So I, I would have a concern, unfortunately, voting for the main motion or the, the substitute motion, when we have 90% of our gifted learners who are being served in the regular school district, that if we have extra funds to bolster the services being provided to those learners, that's where I would feel like the funds need to go, rather than voting to expand the gap of 57% of those assets going to support 11% of those gifted learners at the one school. So, thank you.
Ms. Melick, ready? So I'll offer a couple of comments before I answer a couple of questions. First, you know, for the viewing public and anybody who's in here today, one thing should be perfectly clear to you, and that is, your voice, your emails were read, they were considered, and they have been on the board's mind for months. To the board, I will tell you this, the same conversations you were having among each other about the path to get to where you want to go, trust that administration is having the same conversations. We see multiple pathways that could be considered. We may not agree as a group what pathway is best, but what we have done is listened to each other, as you guys are doing, listening to each other about what you, as a collective board, want to do in terms of this particular situation. From an administrative standpoint, whatever you decide, we can implement. But we do need to know, and we need to know now. And when I say we need to know, and Ms. Anderson brings up a valid point, you know, technically, this is a new opportunity. It would be nice to be able to get public comment for a couple of weeks, but I will tell you, we just do not have the time, from an administrative standpoint, to operationalize a plan if we wait another two weeks. So I am asking the board tonight to, to make a decision, and I'll also tell you that we've got two different situations here. We have the situation in front of us around what to do with ODS for the coming year, based upon this dilemma. And then we have a brand-new situation, which is an opportunity, and that is, the exercise you engaged in today for two hours about the next five-year plan. Information we shared with you today that I know, because I observed it and my team reported to me, opened a lot of your eyes about some opportunities and some challenges that need to be considered, that we're going to engage you with. So I would ask you to, if you, if you can, separate the two. Focus tonight on recognizing, getting 11 members to vote on a particular pathway tonight's not going to happen. It's, it's likely to be a 6-5, 7-4, but you know what? You should be proud of the work you've done, because your voices have been heard, you have picked up the phone between meetings and called each other. You cannot ask for more than that. No one's voice has been, I don't want to talk to you. I mean, all of you have had the opportunity to do that, so you should be proud of that. And unfortunately, we all know that once you make a vote, someone's going to be upset. I don't think there's a solution we could make tonight from doing nothing to doing either of those options where someone's not going to be upset. But I think you can walk out of this meeting with your head held high, because you did operate as a governing body, and you honored the democratic process, whatever that decision is, and we will move forward and tackle the next opportunity, which is to get into this next five-year plan to create the things that this board wants to see as opportunities for our gifted learners over the next five years.
Okay, I see no more hands raised. So the motion was made by Kathleen, her substitute motion, and I'm sorry, through this discussion, I do not remember if we had a second. Okay, so we have a substitute motion on the floor, seconded by Ms. Manning. Any further discussion before we vote on the substitute motion? Yes, Ms. Tonyato?
I would just ask for, this is an important vote, I'm going to call each board member individually and ask them for their vote, if that is okay.
Yes, ma'am, of course. Okay. So Ms. Tonyato, we're ready to vote on the substitute motion.
Okay, Mr. Callen, how do you vote on the substitute motion?
No.
Ms. Brown, how do you vote on the substitute motion?
Aye.
Ms. Riggs, how do you vote on the substitute motion? Ms. Anderson, how do you vote on the substitute motion?
No.
Ms. Franklin, how do you vote on the substitute motion?
No.
Ms. Melick, how do you vote on the substitute motion?
No.
Ms. Weems, how do you vote on the substitute motion? Ms. Manning, how do you vote on the substitute motion?
Yes.
Ms. Owens, how do you vote on the substitute motion?
No.
Mr. Culpepper, how do you vote on the substitute motion?
Aye.
Thank you. And Ms. Kendrick, how do you vote on the motion?
Aye.
So Madam Chair, we have five ayes and six nays, so the motion did not pass.
Okay, so that brings us back to the original motion, which is the adding of the third grade classroom. And so, I've got to go back to that motion. Did you mark that? The original motion was made by?
The original motion was made by Mr. Callen, and it was seconded by Ms. Franklin.
Okay, there you go. Any further discussion on the original motion to add the third grade classroom? Okay, all in favor? Do you want to do that again, or do you want to, okay, go ahead?
Yes, please, okay. Mr. Callen, how do you vote on the original motion?
Yes.
Ms. Brown, how do you vote on the original motion?
Yes.
One more time?
Yes.
Yes, okay. Ms. Riggs, how do you vote on the original motion?
Yes.
Ms. Anderson, how do you vote on the original motion?
Yes.
Ms. Franklin, how do you vote on the original motion?
Yes.
Ms. Melick, how do you vote on the original motion?
Yes.
Ms. Weems, how do you vote on the original motion? Ms. Manning, how do you vote on the original motion?
Yes.
Ms. Owens, how do you vote on the original motion?
No.
Mr. Culpepper, how do you vote on the original motion?
Aye.
Thank you. And Ms. Kendrick, how do you vote on the original motion?
Yes.
So Madam Chair, we have 10 ayes and one nay, and the motion did pass.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. And so this concludes our bridge meeting. It is 5:12, and we are adjourned. See everybody tomorrow morning? Yes, please, feel free to leave your things. See everyone tomorrow morning. Yeah, you can leave your things. I don't think we need any of this tomorrow.